High level conference over here for a second.
Hey, Beth.
Why are you so far away?
I know.
Good afternoon. It's good evening. It's 6:30. I would like to call the Warren Township High School Regular Board Meeting Committee, the whole to order. Do we need a vote to open the meeting? Jean?
Roll call?
Roll call.
Mr. Anderson is absent. Mrs. Blair is absent. Mr. Carlson?
Here.
Mr. Demonte?
Here.
Mrs. Martinez?
Here.
Mrs. Pope?
Hello. We are, sorry.
And Mr. Schultz is absent. We have a quorum.
Okay, item number two, public hearing for the tentative amended budget. Open the public hearing. Do we need a, we need a roll call for that? Will you take a lead from the previous roll call? Just say yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next slide. So on the expenditure side, some healthcare adjustments were made in the ed fund, need to be increased. Special education, private tuition room and board also need to be increased. CTE tuition, cost in enrollment also increased. District technology, this was a one-year Chromebook purchase for this fiscal year. It led to cost savings for next year. It was done in this year. Also administrative salaries were decreased for this year based off of the original assumptions that were used for the FY23 budget. Also food service, general supplies and materials had increased. Next slide. So the transfers, as you guys will remember at the previous board meeting, we did a transfer to accommodate for the Van Doren roof repairs over at the Oak Plain campus. A $3,081,095 with, and this resolution transferred those funds. So net position from 1.87 negative to a positive $3.1 million here for FY23.
Questions, comments on any of it, from anybody?
Mike, could you talk through the, just the second bullet point on the revenue, the ed fund? The request was for 60 cents, but it yielded. Can you just explain that, that bullet point and any, just in consideration of any questions board members might have about that?
Sure. The ask was for 60 cents, and that was based on the 2021 tax year increase, or excuse me, 2020 tax year. We forewent the 2021 tax year, any type of increase because it was based off that. So let's say if we had a dollar and we're asking for 60 cents, our limiting rate would just go to a dollar 60 without any intervention or increase for that 2021 tax year. And that's what we're receiving right now in 2022. It yielded 44 cents, and part of the funds there for buildings and grounds went from 37 cents to 19.7 and change. So if you add up the two, it's not the full 60 cents, it's a little bit less.
Board members, anything? Okay, that's just a presentation, so we don't need to approve anything, I'm assuming. Public comment on items so far, from anybody? Seeing none? I'd like a motion to close the public hearing for the FY23 tentative amended budget, and I need a roll call. Lead from the previous roll call, please. Anybody have any objections? Roll call. Done. Okay, we don't need a roll call. It's a lead from the previous roll call. So that, that's, the tentative hearing is closed. We'd like to open the public, the session, and I need to start with the pledge of allegiance, please. And where's the flag? Behind. You guys won't like this view.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the agenda, and I've got to read something here. This wasn't the long one.
This is not the long one.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Opposed in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda's approved. Thank you. Okay, public comment. Hearing none, seeing none. Board discussion of visitor comments is moot. We have the consent agenda. This is for approval of personnel recommendations per exhibit A and exhibit B. Approval of the payment of bills dated June 13th, 2023. Approval of regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes from May 23rd, 2023, and approval of the FY23 tentative amended budget. And I need a motion.
Second.
I wasn't making a motion, but that's okay.
Yeah, I will.
I, I can read it.
Okay.
I move, oh, do you want me to read it?
Make a motion. Yeah, you can read the whole thing. Thank you. Good, that's good.
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes personnel recommendations per exhibit A, numbers 182 through 198 as posted. And 199, Chris Sueno, reassignment. Number 200, Jose Zera's resignation. Number 201, Matthew Crowley. New hire slash contract. Number 202, James McKnight, new hire slash contract. Chris. Number 203, Chris Sueno. New hire slash reassignment. Number 132, Sarah Stepek, contract. Number 150, Naomi Zapata, contract. And number 176, Hector Borero, contract. There is no exhibit B at this meeting. The payment of bills dated June 13th, 2023 in the amount of $676,596.87. Regular meeting minutes and executive minutes, session minutes of May 23rd, 2023, and the approval of the fiscal year 23 tentative amended budget.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I printed out the budget. It's 30 some pages long. I'm assuming some of you have at least perused it. Are there any questions on any of this? Okay, we have a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye. Oh, we need a roll call. I'm sorry. Lead, we'll let Jean do a roll call on this one.
Motion by Demonte and second by Martinez. Mrs. Pope? Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Aye.
Before, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Committee, the whole. Okay, so do we need to close this and go into that, or what?
I think you can just move, someone can move to go in the committee.
Bear with me, guys. I haven't done this.
I move for the Warren Township High School Board of Education to move to the committee of the whole for the purpose of this section of the meeting. And you can do a voice vote.
In favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. Student committee. Who, what, how?
It's, I believe we only have one item for the student committee, and it's this, well, I'll let you go, but I know what the topic is, but I believe you have a short segment on that, correct?
Yeah, we do. I think I'm going to invite my team up to just walk through two short slides, two or three short slides here. So we're looking at conducting an audit on our special education services. Yep, and so we've got our two special education administrators that'll introduce themselves and give you an overview of what we're looking for. And then we'd like to know what you, if there's anything you would want to ask to add to what we're looking for. So we're really looking for some feedback from you today to make sure that what we're looking for is the same thing that what you think we should be looking for.
There's a calendar in there too, right?
Yes, after this, we'll go through the calendar.
Hi, I'm Eric Garland. I'm the Director of Special Education.
I'm Yessina Gamas and the Special Ed Supervisor.
So we are here today to talk to you about what we are calling a special education audit. So what we are looking to do is to complete a comprehensive gap analysis to really help to identify where our strengths are as a department, as well as to identify some potential areas of improvement and things that we need to work on. So we administratively have sat down and identified a few things that we're hoping to gain out of this audit. So we've listed them here for you. Potential areas of professional development, looking at our instructional methodology. How can we increase parent and community engagement, human capital, as well as taking a look at our service delivery along the continuum of services.
So this audit is a proactive approach. So we want to take a look at the needs of our student body and continue, as they continue to evolve in the post-pandemic learning environment. Warren had, had a compliance audit by the Illinois State Board of Ed during the 2011-2012 school year. There are three companies that are being reviewed. The DM Group, which has an estimated cost of $92,500. Catalysts for Educational Change, that's a range between 40 and 50,000. Public Consulting Groups, which is $40,000 fixed. And then the funding source would be our idea grant funds.
Okay, so as I shared, these are the areas that we have administratively identified, but we're looking to you. Do you have any ideas, suggestions, any feedback? Anything that we missed as a priority focus for you as a board?
Can I ask a couple clarification questions? Just because I'm trying to think through. So what's the different, maybe, can you explain what idea grant funds are for everybody?
So I believe we've talked in the past, our, we have a variety of different funding sources for our department. The federal grant is the idea grant. We typically utilize that grant to help to support some of the salaries of our certified staff. I'm sorry, of our classified staff, also to help to support tuition in areas of professional development. So we've partnered very closely with the business office this year to make sure that we have funds for this for next year.
Correct. And then could you also just describe what it means in the special educational world when we say the term service delivery and the continuum there?
So when we start to take a look at the services that we provide our students, we have a continuum of least restrictive environment that we always are looking at to support our students. So our goal is to support students in what we call, again, the least restrictive learning environment. So that can range from supporting students in general education classrooms all the way down to residential placements. So we have students that are supported here on campus in a variety of different service models. We also have students whose needs are greater than what we can support here currently on campus, who attend either a public or a private therapeutic day. And then we also do have a few students whose care requires additional services through a residential setting. So we're always, again, looking to support students in the least restrictive environment in which they can be successful. So we're hoping that the special education audit might shed some light on our service delivery and how we can continue to work through that and enhance those services.
For explaining those things.
Board?
I had a question, if you don't mind. I'm just curious, will they be working with parents of continued, like, of the current students? Engaging with them, getting feedback from them?
Definitely a possibility.
Okay.
For sure. So when you start to take a look at the different companies that we are exploring, they all have different methodology, right? But definitely parent-focused groups could be a component, for sure.
Is it something we would initiate, or that they suggest? And I'm just curious. I don't know much about this type of an audit.
I think they will do whatever we ask them to do.
Okay.
So it just gets written into the scope of work.
Okay.
Correct? I mean.
Correct, yeah. It is something that we think would be of an area of importance.
Okay. I didn't know if there was a plan or.
No, that's, that's perfect. So that's what we're looking for tonight is, and Ms. Pope, if you, if what you're saying is, hey, let's make sure we're involving parents. Tell us that. We'll put it on the list and make sure it gets them into what we're talking about as we finalize a decision.
I'm pretty, guess not to exclude the children also. I mean, their feedback as well.
Your voice is very important to us.
I appreciate the willingness to engage with third-party company. Just to get an outside view of what we're doing. I know that's hard sometimes to have somebody come in and critique the hard work that you're doing when you know you're doing good work. But that willingness is definitely appreciated. Because sometimes you get so close to it, we, you tend to get tunnel vision and don't see things that might make sense to others. A couple of things that.
The couple of things that, my comments on this, in addition to being thrilled that this is happening, is I've been able to, I've been able to attend the quarterly CEDAL governing board meetings, and it just seems like they're having difficulty staffing, they've put caps now because they just don't have the staff, so as that audit occurs, or maybe even outside of the audit, just what happens when CEDAL gets tighter and tighter? We're a member district, we're paying into that district, but, you know, are we not getting kids in, and then where are those kids going, number one, and I don't think that's getting any better, I think the need for special education staff is probably getting worse, two. And I don't, you know, at a board level, I only know what's at a board level, it seems like we have quite a few kids that are outplaced, so I'm curious, is that within the normal range, is it higher than normal, because we've had to cut back on staff and on a necessity, we've had to send them out, we just have kids with higher needs, that's why we have to, but it does seem like we have quite a few kids that we outplace, the out-of-house, or whatever it's called here. So I'm curious about that, combined with our gain of space that we seem to be getting with our buildings as enrollment declines, maybe there's opportunities there to provide the least restrictive environment, kids in their homeschool with their norm, with their, you know, average peer set, and maybe there's opportunities there that didn't exist because of what have you. Now, I would anticipate we're going to have the same staffing challenges that anyone else would, so I'm not naive going into this, but, and maybe, maybe what's going on is certainly appropriate, but I always love the fact that when kids are able to get services and be with their typical peers, and even if it's for ten minutes out of the day, get to go to lunch with their friends and neighbors, and that, that's always a great thing. So the further we get away from that nucleus of Warren Township's campus, the harder it is for, sometimes for them to feel a part of what is their, their own school and community. So I know they create their own, but it's also nice to have, we have so many talented teachers here and great programming here, you don't always have to go out for that, so it's really just a matter of making sure kids have access to that. So anyway, throwing all those things into the mix, that falls into the, under the service delivery along the continuum, so I'm curious, as you go through this, are we offering the continuum? Is there a certain area that we're not because of whatever I just said? So I, I'm very curious, as this gets looked at, how that looks, not just from your perspectives, but also what an outsider would view it as, as well.
Feedback, I understand, yeah.
Just a quick piggyback on Tony, for me is, are we making a plan, or is there a plan to bring back some of the kids that are outplaced back into the school building? Okay.
But it for sure is always something that we're looking at in terms of our continuum of service, for sure.
Could you just explain the bullet point, human capital, what that, I mean, usually it's human resource, what capital are we?
Staffing.
Pardon me, just staffing, human resources.
And how that staff is helping to support our students, make sure we have staff, at least from my, from my perspective, from my vision, we would really look at the company that we partner with to help identify those pieces, but when we talked about it administratively, we were looking to make sure that our staffing and our resources are matching where our student needs are.
I like to keep meetings short, but this deserves some discussion, and as the second newest member of the board, I have very little idea what's going on, so I'm very happy, very happy that some intelligent questions were asked, so I'm going to ask some very basic ones. You got an analysis or whatever, twelve years ago, or something, what was the previous slide?
Oh.
Oh, from the eleven and twelve year, is this something that's scheduled, or you request it, or is required, or what?
That one, this was before I was in the district, so based on what information I have at this point in time, it was based on a compliance piece. So the states came in and had some compliance questions.
They came in?
Yes.
And how often do they do that, or is this, is this a result of them doing that, or is this something we're doing?
This is proactive, where it's just something that we have been advocating for, to make sure that we're helping to support our students.
Prompt the state to come in.
It's just a rotation of when you're up, you're up, or when they select you, then they come in.
They do it periodically and just.
There's a couple, so there are the periodic schedule, and then they do have some benchmarks that they measure schools against on an annual basis, and you get, if you get too far out of those ranges or away from the benchmark where they think you should be, that can flag you for an audit as well.
Okay, three companies are being reviewed, is this for different parts of it, or is this for the whole thing, or what's that about?
All three of these companies take a very different approach to this, so we just, we explored three different companies for the entire complete audit.
So you're going to, or we're going to pick one, is that the program?
We're going to propose, we'll end up proposing one, after we get some more feedback from you, we'll go back to their proposals, talk to them a little bit more, see if they can.
And you recommend based on what you perceive your needs to be?
Did you learn why one is so much, I'm assuming that's DMG?
Yes.
Is that DMG?
Yes.
I'm familiar with DMG, but why, and I know they're usually pricier in general with everything for consulting, but what are they offering that's twice the cost of the other two? Have you gotten that far? Okay, that's fine, just curious.
Funding source IDEA grant funds, so whichever one, would that be fully funded or not? So that's more or less moot, in terms of, the financial aspect of it is more or less moot, as far as this board?
Yeah, I wouldn't say that it's moot, because traditionally, so we get the dollars, if we don't use the dollars, then for this, we would still use them in other places. So the grant isn't specified.
Question of allocation of resource?
Yes, yeah, we would have to allocate.
Could I have the other slide, please, for a sec? Service delivery, parent community, I'm assuming that the first two would have a whole lot of input from the teachers. Somebody else?
Yeah, if you don't mind. So I see the areas of focus and outcomes, but is there a financial component? I understand financial means has implications in all of this, right, but is there a financial component of the review as to where dollars are going into services and how they're allocated within the, like, the services, so that, like, if there are, I don't know, better ways to allocate funding within our, you know, what we're doing, are there more important ways to structure our funding so that we are serving the kids a little, I mean, is there a little bit of a higher?
Hierarchy.
Yeah, a higher, a higher outlook on it, and kind of take it from the top and say, hey, are we, let's back up a notch and say, do we have the right overall, like, structure, first of all, and I don't even know what the structure looks like, I'll be honest with you, I am just saying, like, you know, there's a lot of dollars, right, there's, there's a ton of dollars, and they're being spent, and we can look at each little, you know, component of things and say, well, is this meeting the needs or not, is this meeting the needs or not, but then when you step back and you look at the entire picture and say, okay, we've, for a long time, focused in this area, but post-pandemic, or whatever changes that might have occurred, I think we need to shift our focuses, which means usually budget allocation, right, to a little bit on this side, and do less with this, more with that, I mean, is there any, have any of them discussed that type of a, kind of a outlook on it?
Directly, but we could certainly explore that further.
I, I don't know, I leave it to the education people, you know, whose primary job is to, boots on the ground, but.
Well, I think that's, but the special ed department works pretty closely with, with say, Mike, or CSBO, right, and we have to trust in them that they're looking at all the pieces, and that's their job to figure out where to allocate, and they know the needs of our students, so.
Well, we're bringing a consulting group in to take a look at that, right, and so I'm asking if that's part of their.
Right, but that's like you bring a consulting group for facility, I mean, you, we bring in consulting companies for all sorts of things.
Right.
So it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't really matter where we're, where we're targeting or where we're looking at, what I'm saying is, I think they're going to come back with the proposal to say, hey, like, we would like to go with this company for these reasons, and this is what we're doing with, with the money.
I think where that may come in is where, because it's always going to come down to the individual kids and the services they need and where their best placement is.
Where our district falls within the, within the needs of our students.
That being said, anytime you outplace, there are increased costs to outplacing as opposed to bringing programs back. So if, what they might see is, I mean, it shouldn't be any more than what you guys see, but if there's a cluster of kids that could be served back here, and we have the ability, the human capital, to serve those kids appropriately, that will always be less money than placing kids out, and there's benefits to kids being in their homeschool, anyway. So it could be where they receive their services potentially, where the cost savings may come in.
And that may be one example of that, but that's what I'm asking.
There's probably others, and transportation, and, you know, all those things.
There's a lot of money that goes into transportation, so if we bring them back, we can save there, as an example.
I think you're making my point, then, like, you know, just taking a bigger look at the picture to see if our current, you know, we've been doing this for a long time, is it currently what we should be structuring all of our funding in these buckets, in the bigger buckets, do you know what I'm saying, instead of just focusing on more smaller programmatic, you know, changes, so, I don't know, that's all I'm thinking about, just because COVID has rocked everyone's worlds, right, healthcare is a completely, I don't even recognize it anymore, like, to be honest with you, and everything has been turned upside down, there is no norm left. So here's your chance to pay somebody that sees a lot of different districts, a lot of different, you know, venues, and has a lot of different experiences, to kind of say, hey, let's be open really high up to see if there's, like, I don't know, platonic shifts, you know, like, I don't know, but financially, I guess I'm thinking about that, too.
As long as it's in the scope, they will do, so I think that's maybe the direction.
I assume that's what they do, though, that's their scope, is to consult on that program, right, so, okay.
I would add too, because we've talked about kind of like possible big changes, we've talked about, I just want to make a comment on where that sometimes intersects with a staff feedback, because they, we can't ask them to do staff feedback, I think that's a good idea. Oftentimes, just so everybody's clear on what, what happens sometimes with these, is when you have a special education audit, oftentimes that third-party, part of what they're reporting to the school board is that staff want to continue with certain practices, and the consultant is going to recommend that we change or modify those practices. That's the experience I've had with many special education audits, and so part of what you're probably asking for, when we go through this, is an external perspective on, here's where we need to place our priority around changes, and you might get some pushback from different stakeholders, but this is what's considered best practice, and that'll help you as a board and our administration understand where some of that conflict may occur, so we have eyes wide open when that comes.
Good discussion, any further, anything further? No action today? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There were some other things on the, under student discussion committee, calendar, that sort of thing?
Just a calendar, I put the calendar for each of the committee up on here, so these are draft items, or likely items, that this, this, we could discuss in this format with our student group next year, just going to read through them, and if you have any that you would like to add, you can tell me now, or at any time during the upcoming year, and I'll throw those to the two board members that are overseeing this part of the committee discussion as we go through that. So career pathways audit, that's part of our strategic plan, course selection priorities, and the course selection process, new courses would fall under that. A couple times during the year, we should probably look at the current staffing, we've had a lot of staff, and any new interventions, and review that and see how that's going. Every year, we look at our handbook, and you give the administration some feedback on the handbook priorities before they start working on those changes. Part of our strategic plan was to provide a proposal to the board around an alternative day schedule, there's a couple different options there, so we're going to do some research this year. We, part of the strategic plan also was to give the board a report on our current grading practices and what exists out in the world of education around grading practices, an audit of our diversity, equity, inclusion practices, discussion around graduation requirements, now that we did pass the referendum and we have an eight-period day, some of those graduation requirements were changed, in part, but not completely, but in part, with the discussion around possibly moving to a seven-period day, and then we do provide an annual DEI presentation. Is that an okay start draft, is there anything else you want me to add to that?
There's a calendar in here, too.
Yep, that's what that is, I just took all that stuff on there, that's, that's what I read through.
That's a lot.
It is a lot.
So I just, I want to recognize that that's a lot, because that's just for one year, right, so if you have to make it a multi, I'm just throwing this out there, but if it needed to be a multi-year, like, you also need to be with the kids and kind of running the school and being where it matters, instead of doing a whole bunch of stuff just because maybe we think it needs to be done. So if these are things that were on your agenda anyway, great, but don't be afraid to, just one person, just, if it needs to bump a year, like, you can't do it all at once.
I second that.
Were some of these items highlighted and others not on the calendar?
On the calendar that the board has, the items that are highlighted are part of the strategic plan, so it's just. On the strategic planning process?
River.
That's what these are, that's what these are for Committee of the whole.
Okay, there was something else?
So yes, you can sit.
You're welcome to join us.
You're welcome to join them, okay. And there was something else here, other topics for discussion, okay, that's it, any other copies for discussion? No, okay. Operations committee.
Okay, we have five items on our agenda tonight, John's not with us, so you've got me. We were going to start with food service, and that's Dr. Engel.
So we had met with.
Do you know the percentage of kits, of kits that we have on free and reduced? And these numbers are based on the breakfast and lunch?
Those are just lunches.
Oh, those are just lunches, oh, wow. How are we doing with breakfast?
Breakfast, though, is not, I was going to say, is not a number one big thing, I mean, I'm trying to remember, a total breakfast served, we, all schools, it was less than sixteen dollars a year, so there's not a lot of time in the morning, especially with foster commitment, and now with four days of total breakfast, but there's the sandwich. and now the four-day total breakfast. The sandwich and that's another problem.
Yeah.
Very complicated. Through the application process or through the.
Are you registered? Most of our, most of our students are direct certified through the state? Is that, is that an accurate statement or not?
Yeah, it's probably closer to, I would say for every one reduced student, there's probably twelve to fifteen free students. So the reduced student population is much smaller.
I want to ask a little question. Is there, I mean, do they hand enough voucher? Is there a problem or any kind of stigma with that? They single out at all?
They're not allowed to.
You can't. It's all on their student ID. You just scan it. They know.
Not even the cashier should.
Yeah, just scan.
Okay, thank you. Part of getting our parents and students to reapply annually, keep that certification going.
You would think that they would be jumping on it.
I haven't, I've dealt with it firsthand for many years and just that reapplication process is some kind of a challenge. So you might have to bring in community classes and buy software in your years. Even though the family is still qualified. What are you going to do?
They're not participating possibly. They're not eating the meals. They could not be, they may not be worth their time.
No, he's saying that they're not reapplying.
They're not reapplying. It takes someone, it's a little bit of a process of updating things and needing certain documents to do it, especially through.
They have to prove it.
Yeah.
But they've already proved it in the past. The question is, why don't they continue, right?
If you want to, they need to reprove.
Yes.
You can check for it.
That's in the medical card, depending on how the process of each individual, school district.
I mean, if you're fostering, like, there's different.
Maybe we might take it a ways.
Actually, fostering doesn't fall under that category anymore.
Is this like statementative or is there a way we could simplify that?
I don't think the case is simplifying the process of the recruitment.
Yeah, we, we can't simplify, but what we have done.
Get used to the dumb questions.
No, 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 no. It's, it's not a dumb question. It's just, there's definitely a procedure.
What we did do is, a couple of months ago, the board gave us the okay to hire a family support specialist.
I was just going to bring that up.
And that was on the consent agenda. So we did hire, is it a past graduate? Does our family support specialist a graduate? Yeah, so we've got a recent graduate, bilingual, and they're going to, their primary work is, for that position is going to be to help shepherd families through that process. It's good for the families. It's also good for the school district because it ensures that we get safe funding tied to those students.
A lot of times, they may not apply too, just with the given, like, right now, we have a, we have a new liaison coming on, right? So there, it could be that they just don't know where to ask, where to ask for help. And they don't know how to fill out, it could be as simple as they don't know how to fill out the form. They can't read it. They don't have access to online. So I think the bringing in a liaison now to do this is, should actually prompt a lot of, it should prompt our percentage to move back up because now we're offering a service that we're going to be able to basically, like, hand, I'm going to be able to hold your hand to make sure that I get you through.
Definitely.
Yeah, county or service, yeah. And some districts need that, and our district needs that.
So if everybody kind of, although we, I mean, we did a better, better rate than ours, but that's far from our kind of, true number, or true number, closer to about, I'm seeing maybe over thirty-three percent, about forty-six percent. I have both U fifty-six and U fifty experiencing increases in their education. They're coming in and are sending their, I'm going to start seeing that number probably over eighty-seven percent over the last few years.
Well, you said true numbers, you mean like demographic.
Should be qualified and earned, or what? What do you mean by true number?
If they're correct, fewer schools being distributed, six and fifty, they're going to take their averages coming in. And if we're correct reflection of our fewer schools, we are lower by about fifteen percent.
Do they do something?
It's, it's a lot more likely for elementary or middle school students to be utilizing the free, reduced lunch benefits of that. So once you get to high school, the students are less likely to bother their parents or remind their parents.
And not only that, but their tastes changed. And they're not as willing to take the free and reduced, in my experience. And that's why the parents don't apply half the time because the kids aren't even eating the meals in general. And so sometimes it just trails off as they get older.
Another element to this is outside of lunch, the higher your free and reduced number count, the more you qualify for certain grants or evidence-based formula, money we get towards things. So there's funding that we're not capturing potentially by not having our real number reflected. So it's just separate from making sure kids eat. There's other benefits to making sure that all, all kids are counted as such. Can I, can I ask a Gurney Fifty-Six question? I think I heard you say their goal or their intention is to have all kids qualify for a free lunch. I'm going to make the jump to then say that they may have more kids eating their hot lunch than maybe they have in the past. So I'm curious, when we started this years ago, it was to help Gurney Fifty-Six out. Do we, does Quest have capacity both in kitchen equipment, coolers, staffing, to service an entire elementary district that may be coming online to eat the hot lunch without, and I'm not sure if you guys know the answer to this, without our kids at Warren who are in our charge to make sure that our kids are not getting shorted either in food options, staffing, or whatever the case. I mean, it's great to help out a peer district, but our primary charge is Warren kids. So I just don't want to see, you know, all of a sudden, our food options are now half as much because Gurney Fifty-Six now has an uptick in how many hot lunches. I, could, could that happen?
And you're preempting, I'm just going to add on because.
Please.
In the future slides, that was one of my concerns because not only that, but they, they indicated that they were short-staffed. So how do you?
Quest, yes.
So how do you expand your services in a period where you're short-staffed and aren't able to staff the current operation you have? So I, I was waiting for the slides, but just because you're right on, you were right on the pathway, I.
So does that affect quality at all? Like, quality of the food? If that makes any sense?
On the national school.
No, I'm talking about like the quality of, the quality of food and service that Quest is providing to our students.
Correct. Quest has employees that are directly for one-twenty-one, just as they have direct employees that are for D fifty-six. D fifty-six and Quest have also, uh, serving line. Have the capacity here still? Yes. Technically, it's the old plain kitchen, yes. I, I can't speak to, obviously, the hiring woes and everything like that, but I, I think the biggest part is really going to be sitting down and having that reevaluation come October and soliciting feedback, but not only from our student population, but I would say the Food Service Committee as well. And.
Yeah, and I wouldn't have anticipated, probably Beth or I wouldn't have anticipated answers right now, but I think where we're getting at is whenever that reevaluation happens or that agreement ends with fifty-six prior to that, just keeping tabs on whether or not we can continue to support them at the levels they probably need support with. And I, maybe, maybe it's just fine. And we're just throwing this out here, just worrying about it. But I would imagine there's some kind of analysis that's going to take place.
Never done a walk through, through the kitchen, but regarding your question, Natalia, you know, unless you're planning your menu very carefully with the equipment you have and the space that you have and the, even if there were investments in capital, you know, in the kitchen, you know, there's a, there's a point at which you can only have so much capacity to do what you're doing. And so my primary concern would probably be the staffing, because if one doesn't show up in one district and it's the same company, I know there's a shuffle. And so we're already looking at slides that are saying we are, you know, have been understaffed. My question would be, how understaffed have we been? But to your question, it's a possibility that it could happen. We'll have to watch and see. But I'd be more concerned with the ability to get the kids through the line, you know, so.
Yeah, but that's part of, part of like even when the, when I say, does our, does the quality of Quest go down for us, right?
I thought you said food.
Yeah, like food quality, the quality of serving, like, it all encompasses the kind of quality that they're providing as a service as a whole.
But if this whole thing goes difficulty, it would be a gradual thing. I would think it wouldn't be like all of a sudden, and we'd have some warning.
No, we could go real quick.
Could it?
Go real quick.
How often do we, you mentioned students survey. How often do we get input from the kids as far as what do they, what do they think of this?
Oh, they'll tell you.
Ooh, hold on.
That's like about a year and a half ago.
We have a student.
Oh, yes, yes. Please tell us, please tell us.
I don't get like hot lunches too frequently, but I would agree that, I don't know about like who the provider was throughout all the years, but the year that we, that we had free lunch specifically, it was a lot worse than it was this year. And I think you could like, you heard that from the students, there was that whole.
Yeah. Well, you guys made an Instagram, a page, and you guys were posting all these things where our board president walked through just as a random and he had the lunch. Yeah.
I did too.
But you guys create, well, you're the, the.
I came and had it too.
Yeah, you did too.
What I learned is when you follow the federal guidelines, there is no salt, no anything.
[laughing]
And therefore, no taste.
Exactly how you should be eating every day.
And I'm not disagreeing. There wasn't anything wrong. There just wasn't anything good.
Right, 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 right.
What, you got hot dogs or what?
Oh, no.
No.
So can we explain?
Baked fries.
You can, but they're turkey dogs.
Can we, maybe, Mike, can you explain to everybody, what was different about the COVID years than before COVID and now?
The COVID years, the USDA offered everybody to be on free USDA meals following the National School Lunch Programs. And it was a strict USDA commodities menu.
You can look at Apple or?
It, it was, it was based on a caloric salt intake, fat intake, saturated. It was just very lean. It made no difference if you were a hundred-pound person or a three-hundred-pound person, you were having your eight-hundred-and-eighty-calorie lunch. It was.
Kids need to grow, come on.
It was, it was rough. I will say, it was rough.
It was all debated when it rolled out years ago.
I mean, we made the conscious effort to make sure that everybody was getting fed at no cost to be able to at least try to provide those families that were really struggling, at least with, with a, with.
But we currently don't, we, we're not on the NSLP or the National School Lunch Program, so we have more flexibility in what is offered for students. But we don't get the federal rebate for every meal.
I hate to belabor this, but who decides on the menu?
Currently?
Yeah.
It's a combination. There's a staff on there, it's got students on there. They try to meet, if I remember correctly, either quarterly or twice a year. I've only met usually once or twice a year. It's during all lunch periods. There's usually between, a small size, maybe six to eight students per lunch period that goes through there. And we solicit feedback. What's working well? What do they want to see? What menu items do they want to have? And they try new foods. And if there are new foods that they enjoy.
Yash, you been on the committee? No.
I'm curious why, Yash, do you mind sharing why you don't eat lunch at the, eat the school lunches?
We just never have, to be honest. But it's like a really common thing. For a lot of kids, even if they don't get like lunch, like, they'll go grab some fries because that's like a fan favorite item, or like, they'll go grab like some chicken tenders. But I, I don't see it very commonly, especially like among my friends, that like a full hot lunch is coming together. Like, they bring something usually.
Okay.
And it's just like more aside.
Bring something of their own and augment it from.
Yeah.
So, could I just ask real quick, back to the first bullet point, you looked at the proposed price sheet. What was, was there something decided or was there?
There, there was nothing decided. It was just being shared with the group tonight. And I think formally, just at the next board meeting.
So do we bring, do we bring those prices for board action? Okay. So we didn't, this is a summary of some of the items. We don't have in the slide deck the whole business plan that they submitted. So if you have any questions or comments about the attachment there, we could go through any of those as well right now.
Which attachment are you discussing?
The, the business review.
The business review from Quest?
Yes.
Yeah. I did have some questions. I don't know if anyone else did, but does anyone else have questions about it? Okay, well, Tony alluded first to the staffing concerns. I was just curious as to, do we have a, did they provide any kind of report or analysis on their staffing over the last year? Like, were there specific positions they weren't able to staff and for how long? Or was it periodic losses in staffing?
That's, that's a good question. I would have to get back to you and see exactly what positions.
And I also noticed that there were comments and figures about what we would call shrinkage or they called theft going on. And it was concerning to me as a parent, but also as a board member.
Did you say theft?
Theft, yeah.
What kind of theft?
Theft of food items.
Or high theft, as I'm looking at here.
Which, you know, as, you know, as someone that's probably been in a high school, it happens, right? I'm not excusing it, but that's part of the deal. But when you have less staff than you planned, when you look at their contract and their staffing proposal, and I started asking some kids, you know, how many cashiers do you see? How many, Yash, two, two on average. And they proposed staffing four plus a lead cashier. And so that's half of the supervision there at the front of the line, being able to monitor kids going through or even get them through the line. So do you have any thoughts about that? Or did they discuss that at all? Because that's half of the supervision at the front of the house.
When speaking to Rebecca Cohen, she's the regional. Hiring, getting out there, doing some job affairs and.
Steps, do you know what, just, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I, I'd be happy to talk to them, like, if they'd like to come and talk to us during a session. But I'm just curious because bringing up the theft and there was a calculation of how much money is lost throughout a quote-unquote "year" by our students, I'd be interested to hear how they calculated that, how they assessed that, you know, what, what they used to base that on, and what their thoughts on, you know, the, the staffing issues would maybe affect, how they would have be affected.
Well, you can't have an accurate calculation if you don't have enough staff manning the line. So, I mean, yeah, I would be interested in how they came to these conclusions on how much was a loss to them when they, when they, they're not fully staffing our kids.
Do you think they're providing?
Yeah, yeah, we can talk to them about coming. Either at the next board meeting or it's summer, so given.
When they're available.
When they're available in the next couple of board meetings. Yeah, we can do that.
Did Rebecca, so like, was there a promise to the district last school year that we would be fully staffed? And then that didn't follow through? So what would be the difference between a promise of last fiscal year to this fiscal year?
Last fiscal year or this one currently?
Oh, yeah, the one we're almost done with.
It was not a promise of trying. It was just, they were doing the best that they could, trying to recruit and hire people and get people to come in. It was, it was a rough year.
So their ongoing effort to fully staff us is still ongoing, is basically, okay.
And I can appreciate that. I mean, again, working in healthcare, I don't mean to make it about me, but you don't have to tell me about staffing. I, I do get that. But then discussing theft and shrinkage and the amounts that they were describing, and then there was something, I, I'm trying to remember what it said, but student slash dean cooperation or, I don't know what the, do you have any insight as to what that was?
Yeah, they were looking for more cooperation from the deans when they had, let deans. They were looking for more cooperation from the deans when they had, um, let deans.
Yash, I don't know. You have any thoughts about this discussion? I don't want to put you on the spot. I always ask you.
I, I've never seen any thefts occur.
Um, one thing that, um, I have seen before is, and that I've seen like cracked down on a lot is just, it's kind of funny. It's like, um, sometimes like, let's say I'll grab like chicken tenders with like one extra chicken tender and like, oh, I got lucky and then they like charge you double.
Oh, that's not fair.
That happens a lot. That happens a lot, but that's just something that. Are trying, that's what I'm seeing from that. Cause that's happened to me in quite a lot.
How much they charge you for chicken tenders?
What?
What do they charge for chicken tenders?
On the price list, I think.
I've just, never mind.
Yeah. So I guess, yeah, I think it would be beneficial, maybe if we could ask them some questions about their report and stuff. Because I just, um, I want to be sure that we're all fulfilling our obligations. I mean, if we need to act on things, then we need to act on things. But if we're not fully staffed and, I mean, I've seen it where kids get angry because their lines are locked too short. Not here, in other schools, the lines are too long and it's going too slow. And if you only have two cash registers instead of four.
Thirty minute lunch.
And you have a thirty minute lunch and you're trying to get to, you know, eat and get to your friends, then I'm not excusing it, but we know what the behavior is. They just, you know, float through. So we want to make sure everything's coming together, I think.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't like that, um, if they're actually charging our kids for two sets of chicken tender meals because there's one extra. Like that needs to be discussed with them. That's not fair. Right?
I, I think they, I think we're.
Yeah, I don't agree with that.
The only other thing I noticed in the report was I didn't see any discussion about, there was, there was a blurb that they had food committees. I didn't see any discussion about food satisfaction and any, you know, feedback that they got and what they did with it. Um, maybe we could just hear what improvements they've made or what feedback they've taken from the kids. And specifically, I was kind of wondering if, because I see that there's a specific NS, well, NSLP menu, which are for the free and reduced kids. They have how many options?
Um, four entrees.
And salads.
Well, it's four entrees and a salad, but two different types of salad, yeah.
And that's every week, the same entrees every week. I, I just wonder if in the food committees, I'm curious, are there kids that are eligible for those meals? A part of those committees?
We wouldn't know because you can't, you can't ask a child, hey, are you part of a free lunch? So we're not going to know.
That's true. That's true. That's true. But maybe they're getting feedback about it. I don't know. That would be a hard one.
Right, but what I'm saying is we can't, we can't.
Identify them. I understand what you're saying.
We can't identify them.
I guess my question is five entrees, five, five meals that don't rotate anything but one week. If I, if my kids only had the four, four choices, the same four choices every week, and maybe this is what's been agreed upon in the, in the past. I, I wouldn't reapply for NSLP if my kid's not going to eat the same foods every week. So I don't know. You know, we talked about the applications.
If they're going to eat the same.
If they're, well, if they're not, if they're not going to go to school and choose those lunches, then I wouldn't reapply if that's the benefit I'm not getting.
Why can't you have three plus one and rotate the one? You know, have three normals and have one that changes.
There are ways to do it, for sure. But I, I, you know, just looking at the program and we're talking about the applications, it might all go hand in hands.
Um, but just to add to that, the process that Quest does have isn't anything not normal from what every other school district has a process in. It's a lot, well, if they, if they have Quest, it's all, everyone, it's, it's all the same thing, like.
Oh, they, they do the only, they only do one variation.
Yeah, they, they do, yeah, like your two, three options and that's it. I mean, I, I work with Quest on my end with my school. Um, most of the North Shore schools have Quest. And, and the practice of how they structure isn't any different than what's happening at Warren. Just as some feedback.
We've raised a few concerns, but, uh, did we get about enough of that one?
Yeah, that's good. Okay, I believe there's a roofing update.
Tell us about the roof.
Mike, is it you? It's you. You've been up on the roof.
So I'm, I'm going to try to read off the slide a little bit and then we're going to go through some pictures, okay? Uh, the roofing project began about, um, was it about two weeks ago now officially? Low sloping roof, uh, part that the Vandorans were working on. That's roof number four, twelve and fifteen. Uh, they did lose one day to rain during that week. Um, the standing seams are also being done right now. So next week, meaning this week, um, the low slope roofs, numbers fourteen, thirteen are going to be worked on. And also the standing metal roofs on roof thirty and thirty-two are going to be worked on and the vapor barriers installed, which we'll go to the next picture and kind of show you.
How many roof sections do we have?
I was just wondering.
Okay, officially at Oak Plain, if I remember.
I see thirty-two at least.
Oh, no, 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 there's a lot more. Um, at Oak Plain, and some of the pictures will help show you the different elevations of where all the roofs are. I want to say there are eighty, I want to say eighty-nine different roofs.
They're just, when you say roof, you mean like the section here is a different section?
Sections, yes, correct. There's eighty.
Is that just at Oak Plain?
Just at Oak Plain.
Oh, wow.
Uh, Almond has multiple roof sections, but they're much larger. And if you look, Oak Plain, these are all from Oak Plain. You will see multiple different elevations of roof with additional flashing with drains. And this is what makes Oak Plain very, um, difficult to roof, if you will, because.
Is that going to be addressed? I mean, Danny and I were up there last summer, if I recall, or whatever it was. And I mean, you, you've got a bunch of different lakes, basically.
Oh, the billings been added on to several times.
Is the drainage going to be addressed on those things? When we're refurbishing this thing and paying millions of dollars to fix it?
Correct.
Come on, repeat that.
I'm sorry, we're paying millions of dollars to fix this roof and I'm just wondering if the structure, the drainage is going to be addressed or is this?
Oh, no, the, the drainage will be addressed, correct. Um, there, it's actually kind of a blessing in disguise, if you will. Because, um, due to code standards now, so roofs used to be R thirty, then went to R thirty-nine, and now they're all R sixty. Meaning the elevation of them has raised, so you can actually pitch and slope more.
Thank you very much.
So you'll have better drainage going forward. And also, Danny, if you can go to a couple, like, just, this gives you like a different, that's one of the slope roofs up there. You could see the vapor barriers down on. Um, if you go to the next one, you'll see we had random holes. Um, they were old, kind of, um, I don't even know how to describe it.
Escape hatchets?
They weren't escape hatchets. No, they're old vents. I want to say vents, but, but they weren't necessarily vented. And you could see the roof deck, if we zoomed in on a couple of these, um, is deteriorating underneath there. So there, there's definitely a lot of replacement work. Um, you could see that I called the sky bridge from one section to the other with the ramps kind of going across to try to make the job a little bit easier for the material.
Are those holes still necessary or they, are they?
Oh, no, they're being filled in and actually insulated.
That's what I was wondering. Oh, good.
Part of the issue is moisture gets caught up there in the roof deck and then causes, you know, issues.
Condensation.
Yes, over time. So a lot of that's being addressed. And, um, this first year is addressing a quarter of Oak Plains roofs, but also the most, um, senior or most in need roofs, if you will, the most that need, need to. That this will be the, most likely the worst out of the four, um, kind of, uh, future projects.
Be careful with the word senior.
No. Yes, okay.
Anything else?
Anything else on the roof from anybody?
We're having our weekly meetings and, uh, I'll let you guys know next, next time we meet.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
We have a staffing update from Danny, I believe.
Yeah, a quick update. So there are about twenty or so, uh, between twenty and thirty, uh, additional positions that are new to the district that the board approved. So I'm just giving us a quick, um, stoplight report on those. We've been able to hire and fill a good chunk of those, I think a little bit over fifteen. Um, which we're really excited about. And I just want to, uh, send out my appreciation to the staff that have been involved in these interviews. Between these, this slide and the next slide, it's almost thirty staff members that we've been able to hire so far. Which if you think about our staff count, is close to ten percent of our staff that we are adding to either with new positions or filling vacant positions. It's a big lift from the administration and our, they've been, administration and then interview teams, which is, have involved staff. So I appreciate their effort. Um, the, the two areas here that I think are most likely to not be filled, we're going to probably struggle the most filling are, it looks like after we've been trying to hire, are these intervention coordinators and the maintenance staff. Uh, the candidate pools for those are either low or highly paid. Um, and so there's some hurdles there that we're, we're, we're still working through. Um, and then I've got kind of a similar stat, stoplight report for open positions that have been vacated. Because either someone internally has moved into a new position or somebody is leaving or has left of the school district. So I think we should be pretty good on most of these. Most recently, um, yesterday we received a formal resignation from our director of facilities. That's a high profile administrative position we'll have to fill. Um, but just wanted to give the board an update on those. I'll send, uh, this report out in an email tonight as well, since we have some board members that aren't here. But are there any questions in the meantime?
So, security director, what happened to the guards?
Yeah, so kind of two areas that, uh, staffing is very cyclical on would be our paraprofessionals. So I didn't include those in the prior two slides, uh, because we do have paraprofessionals that leave. And then, uh, new paraprofessionals are, are hired on a pretty regular basis over the summer. Uh, so that's, we'll constantly be working at those paraprofessionals. Well, for the security staff, we have eight applicants that we're interviewing for right now. That's not enough to fill everything internally and so.
Improvement.
Yeah, that's an improvement. Um, getting the security director at least approved has helped because that person, even though they haven't started yet, has helped beat the drums a little bit out, uh, in the, in the job market. Um, but we did have worked through, um, a possible hybrid model. So depending on how interviews go over the next two weeks, we'll then be able to identify whether, uh, how much we need to lean into a hybrid. So we've worked with Howe on what it would look like if they're providing four, five or six staff members per, per campus, I believe. So we're hoping to hire somewhere between probably, I would, I shouldn't say hope, we would love to hire them all. I think probably what we're looking at is we're hiring between two to four internal guards per campus for this upcoming year. And then the rest will supplement with a continued contract with Howe. Any other questions?
Anything else from anybody?
We have one more item and it's a security systems update.
Yeah, this is also is a quick one. Uh, just as an update, we did, uh, we're almost complete with the camera system. We've got a few more cameras at Almond and Oak Plain.
I'm excited about those cameras.
Yeah, they're pretty cool.
The kids are talking about the install, by the way. I've gotten feedback at home and a couple others, so.
That's good, that's good.
Do we have any, do we have any near the chips or french fries? I just, I would like to connect some dots.
Uh-huh, they see you.
Just checking.
Yeah, we've got, we, we're getting ready and prepping for camera training for the users, uh, in August. We're done with the original door access project. So that project, that first phase was to replace fobs with the vercatte fobs so that our door access system and our cameras are synchronized. And then the board asked us to, uh, start on a second phase, which, um, includes additional door readers, mostly at Oak Plain, but a few at Almond. Uh, but, and then eventually we'll get into that phase three, uh, but we got to wait on some door work, uh, to start looking at rekeying and putting some blank, uh, locks, where we've had locks in the. And I included, uh, a proposed calendar for operations committee. So if anybody has any recommendations, just let me know.
Okay, thank you very much, stakeholder committee, Natalia.
Well, we don't have many specific items tonight, other than the ca, uh, other than the calendar of discussion items that we are looking at for next year. But I did want to get an update from Dr. Reisman and, and the administration on the cell phone policy. Um, we've heard a lot from stakeholders about the impact of cell phones on this, on the school environment every day. And this is a very important topic that we want to be able to continue to be, to support our teachers and our building with.
Yeah, let me pull up, uh, we're talking about, I can give you a kind of an update on some big picture things that we're looking at. Uh, we did provide an updated, um, just notification as part of the registration process. Um, the board approved some additional policy, uh, that just clarifies that a video recording is not appropriate in schools and could be in violation of Illinois eavesdropping laws. Uh, right now, uh, we just finished a round right before, uh, staff left, we finished a round of feedback, um, with all staff. And then a round of feedback with our lead teachers to talk about the impact of cell phones, not only in the school in general, but also in the classrooms. Uh, so we met on a Wednesday morning with, we rotated in different groups of teachers, uh, during that late start time. And then went, put a draft of a plan together on how to support teachers better with cell phones. Then went to the lead teachers and said, will this help classroom instruction? They gave some feedback to us, so we're working on another round of iteration for that. We're going to email that out, uh, to the, uh, lead teachers, uh, to get another round of feedback here in the next week. And then we are hoping to bring you in the July meeting, another update to, um, the student handbook. That would include some more specific directions for students around what expectations are in the classroom. Our prior handbook, uh, left a lot of autonomy to the teacher, which provided, I think, some, a lack of clarity around expectations.
I think they're looking for more guidance from administration.
More enforcement.
More enforcement.
So the, I think the, the policy or the handbook changes that you'll see here in a few weeks will include, uh, some more specific guidance around expectations for students, where they can use their cell phones, when the default is that they should not be using their cell phones.
We still can't put firewalls, Chris, to block it all?
Still can't put, still can't put firewall cell phones.
No, we can't do that.
As well as.
Yeah, Wi-Fi firewall.
Yeah, as well as a modification on, um, discipline and intervention. So a quicker timeline for, uh, intervening with a student who's distracting a class or otherwise using the cellphone inappropriately. Um, so I think we've done a good job of getting a couple rounds of feedback and we're going to make an update to the handbook here before August hits.
I think that is extremely important. The two sessions that I sat in with the faculty, with the teachers, that was their number one piece. Number one, far and away. And they spent a long time talking about it and they, they could see very little recourse. So they need support on that.
Well, and from the kids' perspective, I mean, if you don't have consistency throughout classrooms, if there was left up to the.
They put it on the teachers.
Teachers, yeah, I mean, that, that, that just sets you up for failure, whether you're a teacher or a student, because you're.
The teacher needs to be able to say, this is policy.
Yeah.
We need to be able to say that and then they, they can feel supported by that.
We need to give them that tool.
But if the kids are going to different classrooms and getting different.
Right.
Messages on their cell phone, I mean, I, you know, it'll be difficult for any kid to behave with their cell phones, I think. So I think it'll be a really positive change, I hope.
Yeah, you, um, I'll send a couple, you're probably, most of you aren't reading like educational news on a regular basis, but maybe you are.
I am.
Um, but the cell phone thing is a problem across the country. It's, it's.
I just got a newsletter about that today.
Yeah, it's really tough.
You have to be as a parent.
It's really tough. And part of the tough, part of the tough thing is that, um, adults struggle with it too.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so.
I struggle.
I'm a, if I'm a child and I might struggle with, you know, my own technology use, it's, I probably also have a parent, because I do, you know. I struggle sometimes where I'm like, you know, and I should probably pay more attention to my family right now. And so we don't really have a lot of, this is, the cell phone is impacting people at all ages. And, um, so part of what we're trying to do with the cell phones is recognize that we should have some discipline and some clear processes for discipline. But we also need to probably culturally recognize that we need to help people learn how to manage their technology use on their own.
Related to that, to open up a whole new can of worms. Write me an essay on the Peloponnesian War. Is there artificial intelligence? Are we addressing that? Are we even thinking about that?
Yeah, so we are thinking about it. There's been a couple, there's been a couple, uh, sessions that staff could voluntarily take on their own. Uh, some of the programs that staff use for plagiarism checks are now checking for artificial intelligence likelihood. So there's some tools coming out. I think that's, that's going to always be changing and we're going to have to keep paying attention to that. But that is, that's definitely going to change the way we think about teaching and learning and assessment.
Because if, if, if I'm a student and I need to write something, I'm going to take it and then I'm going to Carlsonize it. You know, I mean, it, I, that seems to me to be a very difficult situation that we need to be very much on top of.
Well, we're not alone.
Yeah, Yash, what do you think about that?
Yeah, Yash uses it every. Yeah, Yash uses it every day.
Right.
It's really common, yeah, like you said, like.
For school papers and stuff?
I don't know about like big papers, because like you can tell, like I think you can tell. But like smaller assignments, like write, write a fifty-page about the Civil War, like instead of reading a two pages, I can just use chat GPT, you know, like a lot of people do that, like it's easier.
We used to use the encyclopedia.
Yeah. I don't think that's as much of a problem for like school papers, though, personally, from what I've seen, because like I feel like it's just really obvious to a certain point when like you need to, like especially in those like English classes, like you're trying to aim for a certain thing, get a certain style, like you can't get that, I don't think.
Yeah, right now, like our English teachers use Turnitin, a program called Turnitin.com and we do have a mod, we do have a purchase agreement with Turnitin.com. So in addition to comparing when students turn in to their teacher an essay, Turnitin, the teachers make sure it's part, it's handed in to Turnitin.com online and Turnitin gives them a report that says, hey, seventy percent likelihood that this was plagiarized. It'll also now say eighty percent chance that this was artificial intelligence. And really, what that, right now, what that should prompt a teacher to do, and as we go through this, we're probably going to learn more, is that should prompt a teacher to have a conversation with the student and maybe check for further understanding, ask some probing questions. Because checking for AI isn't necessarily foolproof, but it at least can bring up a red flag and the teacher can ask for some further understanding.
It's a whole new topic, but. Yeah, Turnitin just released mid-April their AI detection within the product, no extra cost. So if we subscribe to that, we already get it. GPT Zero partnered with a company and I believe Canvas is now, has integrations with that, so there is another out there. But the best way, I think we as a district or as a board, could be making professional development to our teachers, what it is. You know, this is the world our kids are going into, when is it appropriate, when is it not appropriate? Not to ban like New York public schools, but, because pretty soon it's going to be built into Google Docs and Office and all that, which they've already said it will be.
It's already in.
Yeah, it's already, yeah, predictive text is already in there. And then the other is through board policy. So if you have an egregious use, yes, it should always be conversations for now. But let's say you have an egregious use of AI and someone submitting it for original work. I do happen to know the Illinois Council of School Attorneys is taking on the discipline policy, seven one ninety for this mid-year in regards to AI. So it's coming, so that way when, if and when they have to discipline, then we adopt that policy and then they have, there's teeth to that. So it's a combination of education, but also discipline when appropriate. You shouldn't ban it because it's going to be integrated, it is already starting to become integrated into everything, so banning doesn't work. It's.
Well, if you ban it, that makes it.
Yeah, it's the new graph, yeah, it's the new graph and calculator.
I just wanted to jump in if that's okay. So we first saw AI chat GPT kind of come up in the fall and, you know, credit to Katie Moore and Heather Connor, our two lead teachers for our English department, they got on top of it, started to figure out ways to identify, did some research around Turnitin.com. But the part that I was really proud of our teachers for was they took a, the way they looked at it was in terms of, like Tony was talking about, with professional development. So our instructional coach, Sean Smith, has been running professional development sessions with our teachers all winter. He's been meeting specifically with the English department to talk about how do we implement different aspects of AI as writing tools and learning tools in our classrooms. So our teachers are learning more about what chat GPT is able to do, what different AI programs are able to do to support learning, rather than trying to shove it into a closet and act like it doesn't exist, meeting it head-on and looking at how do we make that an instructional tool that we can embed in our classrooms. So I'm real proud of the work that our teachers are doing to take this on and it actually uses a tool to enhance learning here at Warren.
Advantage if you use correctly.
And there's, I mean, this is a whole nother topic of AI, but there's also, it's the professional development that they provide for the teachers to recognize it or the non-technical ways to live with it. So graphic organizers, it's, you know, the, I heard a comment like it's the best defense against the dark arts, dark arts being AI. So just using a graphic organizer or just having kids start a draft in class or citing, AI is not going to cite, so just citing resources. So there's non-technological ways too that they'll hopefully teach the teachers.
Eventually you can have AI experts.
You might.
Very good at using it.
But it's like, so I'll draw a connection back to what you were saying. So just like the cell phones, I mean, there's all this tech that somehow we need to support them, probably just mainly in board policy, but just also giving them the green light to kind of be creative too. Like this is new, so don't wait for, you know, to hear about what the district next door is doing. So if there's something creative, our teachers. Sure, why not?
If I were to take it head-on, I'd say, okay, here's a grab bag of questions or topics, who comes up with the best AI, whatever. I mean, you could make a competition out of it too, you could, you could use it.
Sure.
Just a thought.
Classes, we had this assignment with like, you were given a country and you had to like get the entire history of it and like different sections. And even like our teachers said like, that's okay, because we're going to Google search it anyways, like what's the difference in you using this?
But who comes up with the best information, doesn't matter how you get it. Anyway, enough of that, sorry for that, anybody else on that, anything?
I have a question about the cellphone policy.
Yeah, so I get like how you can convince like a freshman or sophomore, but I feel like getting a junior or senior at this point to be like, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna adhere and I'm gonna listen is like very difficult. Like, is there any?
Yeah, and that's actually something we talked about today is, it's normal right now for someone who's in eighth grade or seventh grade. Last year, our feeder school districts, if an administrator sees a phone, they just take it. The middle school students know, hey, my phone's got to be out of sight. That hasn't been the case here for a number of years. And so for our sophomores, our juniors and seniors, it's increasingly, the older they are, the more difficult it's going to be to, to change behavior. It'll be a lot, a lot easier for the freshmen. So I, I think Yash is right, it's going to be difficult and we're going to, I think part of what we're going to have to do as an organization is be clear on when things are an issue and they're distracting from the class learning environment and as opposed to when it's, a child might be doing something that we don't think they should be doing, but it's not disrupting anything or they are not, or they're still able to manage expectations within the classroom. Sometimes as adults, we like to tell students or children what to do just because we're adults and they're children and we're going to have to kind of manage through that, especially with our junior, our upper-class students. I think that is going to be difficult. What other thoughts you got on that, Yash?
Having some classes, a lot of, most of my teachers, even maybe even all, like when you have any sort of free time, if you're, you can usually listen to music and if you're using your phone for like another purpose, like that's your fault, you have to do it at home. I feel like that like works for students, they're like, I can wait ten minutes, you know?
But finally.
Like you have, there's an option at some point in the class to, you'll probably be able to take out your phone. Like, let's say there's like five minutes at the end of class, like you can, or if, like I said, like there's work time, you're filling out a worksheet.
Okay, but during, during a lecture, when I'm telling you about something, I don't want to be looking at that.
I get that.
Is that appropriate?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's what we're trying to get at.
Yeah.
The cellphone usage should not be disruptive to your, to the actual student, the students around or the teacher who's trying to teach and at the end of the day, that's also disrespectful towards your teacher.
I think what Yash is saying is it's more palatable probably for the kids if they see it coming at a certain point. They can prolong that, you know, immediate gratification. Yeah, and that seems to work, is what you were saying, right?
I've been in some.
I could see that.
Turn on, use that, say, okay, cellphone time, you got ten minutes?
I've been in some classes as an adult where they just start out saying, okay, I'm giving you three minutes. Now, of course, I want to preserve instructional time, but go, but when the three minutes is up, they all go away. And so say, post what you, or not post, but check what you got to check, do it now and we'll move on. I think the biggest thing from a board perspective is if we're applying the rules equally and reaffirming this, then we're going potentially to have parents coming up to us saying, you know, poor Johnny got yelled at because the teacher. Well, yeah, like that, that's, these are what the rules are. So I think if we're standing behind this and supporting the administration and the teachers, we might hear a little bark, but we have to be able to defend it and that's probably the best way that we can support.
Well, and as we're discussing all this, all I can think about is the wedding I attended in Wisconsin this last weekend, specifically requested everyone not to bring a cellphone. I think there were three of us that didn't bring a cellphone. And I'm thinking, just as an adult that can't manage their own behaviors, you know, and we're expecting these young adults to do it. So it's a, it's a tough sell, especially where there's been precedents in the last several years, COVID on top of it. This is, to your point, Yash, it's going to be, it's going to be moving the barge slowly, but it's just going to take consistency.
Most thing is, the most important thing is consistency across the board, give them a tool.
And support.
And maybe gradual. Okay.
All right, thanks, Danny. Can you pull up the calendar of committee discussions, discussion items for the upcoming year?
Yep, so here's our list. If any board members have any questions or feedback, you can let me know. This is a simplified one, so we've got some input systems, public relations, branding, the legislative and ISB resolution priorities, and then some feedback, feedback reports from stakeholders. We also have on here as part of the strategic plan, we're going to internally just do a small review of what types of resources students have in the community. When we did a feedback session with some of our recent alumni as part of strategic planning, they recommended that we, we just look at what community resources our students have. So if needed, we can be an advocate for our students when the community is looking at resource allocation. So things like the teen center that the township has or has had or has currently in different parts of town.
Is that the one across the street or the one in Park City?
Yeah.
Both, both.
I did it with the two, yeah.
Down the street. Yeah, and many shut down during COVID that like maybe churches provided and stuff, so they've kind of disappeared.
All right, anything else that anyone wants to talk about?
I wanted to add a couple of things. Dr., Danny and I are going to meet with Dr. Sodik from CLC next week because we're trying to do some outreach. The three, Natalia and I are going to meet with Danny and we have a great list of community organizations, which I left home, which I meant to bring, that we're going to break up. You still have it, whatever, but it's, I don't know, twenty different community organizations and, you know, we're, some of us are going to go talk to some of those. And I'm going to make it my business to go to District Fifty in Gurnee Grade and maybe Milburn School Boards and one of you could come with me if you'd like. And I just want to introduce myself to them for two reasons. Number one, establish a better liaison between this board and them. And number two, I'm a new board member and I'm very interested in how they work. But, so I'm going to be doing that, any of you welcome to join me? And that's all I have to say for now.
For that calendar, though, are we going to collectively kind of split to those meetings?
Well, I guess that's what the three of us are going to talk about.
Yeah, what I was thinking was, over the summer, everybody's had that list for a couple months and over the summer before school starts, I'll touch base with each board member and find out which of the, which of those items or organizations or meetings you would like to go to. Then Ms. Love and I can make sure that we keep those on your calendar, on your radar, and then when there are gaps, the three of us can talk about it and/or my team can try to reach out to those organizations as well.
Well, not to, but I mean, two-thirds of those I've either been a member of or no and I'm very happy to go and address any of them anytime.
And you're retired?
And I'm retired.
I still work and so does Beth.
I know, I know. So I mean, I'd be very happy to go, any other governmental agency I've got to know, many of the social agencies I know, I'd be happy to go. And I could carry that burden because there are other burdens that you guys carry that I don't, so I'd be happy to do that. The only thing I ask is either one of you guys come with me or I have a good cheat sheet. So I can sound reasonably intelligent and coherent.
Since the board meetings are in the evening, I'll, I'll take you up. If you let me know when you want to go, I'll go with you.
I will do that.
All right, thank you, well, that's all for now, we can go back into the full meeting.
Okay, that's it for stakeholder commission, we have nothing else on the agenda, but before we do. Anything from you, Yash? Anything you want to hear about? Anything you want to tell us about?
You're graduated.
So, what are you doing here?
He's, he's.
Thank you for being here.
He's keeping the legacy alive for one more minute. We really, Yash.
We love it.
Yeah, Yash, I just want to say, you have been a really big impact on our school district this year and I think in the years to come, I think we've all rethought the way that students, we can be interacting with students and students can help us make decisions. Wish you the best of luck and when August, September hits, you're going to get an email from me and just look, we'll see if we can look for some more feedback from you next year.
We expect to see you.
Yes.
Often, by the way, so.
Run for office, Yash.
I'll give you five.
Okay, I need a motion.
Only Duke.
Oh, you're going to Duke? Nice, congratulations.
Slack.
I need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole and reconvene the regular meeting, is that what we're doing? Okay, make a motion. Adjourn the committee of the whole and reconvene the regular meeting?
I have to pull up my.
I'll make the motion, I don't care, somebody second.
You make the motion.
Moved to adjourn the committee of the whole and reconvene the regular meeting.
Okay, I'll in favor say aye. Oh, you want a wall crawl on that? How about a second?
Second.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Done. Now the meeting is now reconvened? Now, what am I doing? Closing, you want a motion to close the regular meeting?
Moved to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to.
Second, I'll in favor say aye.
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 Meeting is now adjourned. She took a big sigh.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.